Good evening. Welcome to the February 26th Public Works Session of the Rockville Center Board of Education. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Gavin, we have a very exciting recognition of students this evening.
We do. We have a very talented front row. Nothing personal to anyone who's not sitting in the front row. Dr. Walsh, nothing personal, I swear. But we have an extremely talented front row that are here to give us a wide variety of both presentations, and we also have some recognition as well. So I'd ask Dr. Walsh to come out of the back rows to the podium and then introduce two of our students, two exceptional students tonight for their hard work and achievements. Dr. Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Gavin, and thank you to the Board of Education and Central Administration for welcoming me here tonight to talk about two outstanding students at Southside High School. Today I have the distinct honor of recognizing a student who exemplifies the wonderful traits that we seek in all of our students. Beyond maintaining exceptional grades, our salutatorian has demonstrated that excellence knows no boundaries. From conducting sophisticated DNA research at Cold Spring Harbor Labs to creating portraits for refugee children through the Memory Project, she has shown us that science and art are not opposing forces but complementary tools for understanding and improving our world. She has taken the most rigorous course of study that we offer here at Southside and has done so at such a remarkably high level. What truly sets this student apart is her commitment to lifting up others while pursuing her own dreams. She founded an organ donor awareness program, created a sustainable French language program for elementary students, and devoted 100 hours to patient care at Mount Sinai South Nassau. As president of multiple clubs and first chair viola in our chamber orchestra, she's proven that leadership isn't about personal achievement alone but about creating opportunities for others to excel. Perhaps most importantly, this student has shown us that innovation and compassion go hand in hand. Whether presenting research on DNA fragmentation at the APS Global Physics Summit, publishing articles on bioethics, or creating award-winning artwork addressing social issues, she has consistently used her talents to address real-world challenges. Her selection as an unsung hero at our Breakfast of Champions ceremony speaks volumes about her character. Someone who excels not just for recognition but for the genuine desire to make a positive impact. This student embodies everything we hope to see in all of our students, and we are immensely proud to name Elena Mignorance the salutatorian of the Class of 2025.[1514.13][1514.13][applause] Congratulations to Elena and her family. I also have the honor of speaking about our valedictorian, who exemplifies the very best of Southside High School's commitment to academic excellence and well-rounded achievement. Throughout her academic career, she has demonstrated exceptional talent and dedication across multiple disciplines, earning membership in five honor societies, including the National Honor Society, the New York State Science Honor Society, math, and French Honor Societies, as well as the prestigious Triem Music Honor Society. Her passion for both science and service is evident in her remarkable achievements. As the founder and president of our Public Health Club and president of both Mock Trial and Biology Club, she has shown an outstanding leadership abilities over the years. Her scientific aptitude has earned her second place in the Long Island Chemagination Science Fair, while her business acumen has led to a top-10 placement at the New York State DECA State Career Conference. Beyond academics, she's an accomplished musician who has achieved NISMA Level 6 in piano, serves in the St. Agnes Girls Choir, and generously shares her musical gifts by tutoring young pianists. Her dedication to community service extends to her roles as a certified lifeguard, CPR instructor, and camp counselor at Hewitt Elementary School. What truly sets our valedictorian apart is her clear vision for her future and her proactive approach to achieving her goals. Her extensive shadowing experience in dental and orthodontic practices demonstrates her commitment to aspirations for a career path in dentistry. As a math and science tutor, she has helped fellow students achieve significant improvements in their academic performance, including helping students reach mastery level on their Regents exams. These accomplishments, combined with her participation on the varsity swim team and her various leadership roles, paint a picture of a scholar who not only excels personally but lifts those up around her. She embodies the spirit of academic excellence, leadership, and service that we hope all Southside High School graduates will carry forward into their futures. I am thrilled to present the valedictorian of the Southside High School Class of 2025, Daniela Argandizo.[1652.82][1652.82][applause] Congratulations to Daniela and her family as well who's here tonight.
All I can say is wow. On behalf of the entire board, we are so proud of you both, Daniela and Elena. Congratulations, and we wish you the best as you move on after graduation And congratulations to your parents as well.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Gavin, Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Madam President. This Monday marked our high school's inaugural Challenger Basketball game for the first time. The Challenger League was created by Nassau County schools to provide basketball programs for students with special needs, and this year, thanks to Mr. McGuire and our high school staff, our school formed its own team. They played their first game at Valley Stream South High School, where they performed exceptionally well. But the reason we're talking about this is not because they did great on Monday, but we want to invite everyone to our home opener next Monday, March 3rd at Southside. but we want to invite everyone to our home opener next Monday, March 3 at Southside. One of the priorities of our Board of Education has been to make sure that we are expanding opportunities for every student, and that aligns with our board goals, and this new league is a wonderful example of our commitment to enhancing outcomes and opportunities. Red and blue is upon us. Our annual red and blue festivities kick off tomorrow night with Song Night. Students have been working diligently to prepare. I know I walked, I saw rehearsal yesterday for one of the teams, I won't say which one, and we look forward to an exciting competition. Event links, so for those of you that may not be able to make it out there, event links will be posted on the Southside High School homepage, and you can also order video flash drives of the entire extravaganza through the Video Club at videoclub@rvcschools.org. We also wanted, this is also a high school-related announcement. There are new state reporting requirements in New York State, where now every district is required to verify whether each senior has committed the free application for federal student aid or the FAFSA. I know you guys have probably heard it, or your parents have probably heard it as well. So not only is it advisable that everyone fills it out, but it's our responsibility to reach out to you to ensure that you know that you should fill it out and verify if you have, okay? Or at least talk you through it, the possibilities if you don't. So, one of the things we want to make sure that we do is make sure we are going to be sending out more detailed information later to all of our parents later this week to guide you through this process. So not only are we, you know, encouraging parents, and we've had parent-night about the FAFSA with our guidance programs, but we want to make sure if anyone has any questions, we're still available. Reach out to your child's guidance counselor, or you have any questions, myself, Dr. Walsh, and we can help you through that as well. So it can be quite a formidable process the first time you're going through it, for those people that have never filled it out before. And depending on, you know, what, you know, depending on how you fill it out and your situation, it can open up a lot of doors in terms of aid. So, we just want to make sure that we announce that tonight and know that for our high school parents, for seniors, there'll be an email from the high school later this week. And that is my report, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Another priority of our board is student service, and I think listening to the accolades here tonight, we're not just proud of your academic success, but the service components really are what stand out for us. So having said that, I'm going to turn it back over to you, Mr. Gavin, for our student service presentation.
So tonight, not only are we joined by the estimable John Murphy and Marie Dalton, but we are also joined by a number of our students here who will co-present our work on student service here in Rockville Center Schools. This was another conversation that we had with the board during the summer during retreat, and we had it again during our winter retreat about what makes service learning important. And I just want to preface it by saying this is something that's one way that we try to meet our goal of community partnerships. So this is one leg of trying to meet our goal of community partnerships, and this is also something that, as we know, when we looked at the Blue Ribbon Commissions for High School, this is another component of not only their portion of a graduate, but it's also a component of some of the things that they want for us in terms of how we allocate credit. So I will turn it over to the estimable John Murphy.
Am I hot now? I mean the mic. Mr. Gavin, board members, how are you tonight? Good, good. I, this was not, our goal, Ms. Dalton and I right now, is, as is service learning, to tee this up, get out of the way, and watch the kids do what they do. I mean, so what we're going to imitate tonight is actually what the role of service learning is. I think you should just bear in mind what we just heard, which is the very exhaustive resume of the Val and Sal. How much of that was involved service, and how much of that involved them? I just, I'm not going to answer that question, it was kind of rhetorical in nature, but keep that in the back of your mind as we unfurl that which we already supremely do, but need to do more cohesively. So, as Mr. Gavin mentioned, this is a culmination of a series of presentations. This time last year, we talked about clubs and extracurriculars, and went through 180 clubs, the budgeting, the proposals, and how, what a wealth of things we have to offer. I'd like to beg your indulgence and consider this tonight as a bountiful harvest of riches, but also more like a curriculum project. In other words, we have 180 silos of great events for kids, but what we see coming, which is what informed this board goal, which informed our mission statement with strategic planning, which is informing the Blue Ribbon Commission, which is informing the revisions to the IB program, is a reemphasis on certain things, like our climate survey last year, where the most commonly asked question of a student is, "Why am I learning this?" Or, "Where can I have more choice?" And I really, really get lit up when I'm doing projects and I'm building stuff. You start thinking about those things that students advocated for, and the inquiry-based learning model that we're looking at in the pathways, and the plans of a portrait of a graduate, and then look at the increased importance about what we're about to speak about, which is project-based learnings. We have everything in place to do what we need to do, we need to do it more cohesively. So, the alignment and the cohesion of what we do already before we start adding is the primary objective, the goal of which, like I said, is to tee this up and to let students talk about that which they're already doing, which will inform our future. This is about career prep, I'm not going to trivialize that, but I don't want it to only be about careers, because what we do for work, what we do for a living, and what we do for money should be very different things. This is about learning for life, and this is about getting lit up by what you do. So, when we talk about this and we talk about holistic learning, I'd like you to consider service learning more as a kid finding out who they are, not about what they want to do, because they are compatible, but this is a broader spectrum, and we'll get to it. I know this looks like highbrow stuff, because it is. We're going to look at the highest of high level of learning, evaluate, create. This is where the gold is, and I'm going to beg your indulgence to consider that this might be the key to the next phase of our development as a learning agency. But wait, there's more. So Ms. Dalton's going to walk through the preemptive strike before we unleash our real main attraction.
So we always like to come to, what is service learning? A shared understanding, a definition for us? You know, service learning is the highest form of education, where knowledge meets action to create meaningful change. It empowers students to develop their voice, take initiative, and apply their learning to real-world challenges. Through participation in service-driven clubs, students not only contribute to their communities, but also build self-confidence, independence, and leadership skills. Again, all the things you're just, you know, flying off the cuff, but I like to prepare a little bit. Two different personalities, you're seeing the yin and the yang here, two great co-teachers in action. But by fostering these student-led projects, we're engaging our students in opportunities where they're exploring their passions, they're connecting to the community, they're thinking about their future careers, they're taking ownership over initiatives, they're extending their learning beyond the four walls of their classrooms, their school buildings, into the communities. And with us here, we're thinking about equity, inclusivity, and it's at the heart of all of this for our initiatives. We're committed to ensuring that our students have these opportunities to make their learning and their service meaningful experiences. So providing these opportunities, we're really creating a culture of belonging for our students, not only in our buildings, but in our community.
I wrote stuff down.
You did!
I did. I had a script, it wasn't all off the cuff. So, so as we said, service learning, so that we're all on the same page, there's two, there's two sides to that, right? There's a service and a learning. I'd like to reemphasize the latter, right? Service is great, but this is about not just acting, this is about not just creating a checklist of things I'm going to do, but this is about the learning outcome. We could do a lot of stuff and not learn anything. We can have a checklist of things that we've done, which is why some of the major agencies that we've affiliated ourselves with have moved away from the checklist model, from the hour-counting model to the reflective model. I don't want to know what happens in Wood Design, I want to find out how you learned, or what you learned in Wood Design. Tell me about an intimate interaction you had with the senior, with the young kid, tell me how that went. That speaks much more tellingly about your growth as an individual than learning vectors, which is probably going to go over my head anyway. So service learning is about that classroom, that interaction between self and other through a project. So irrespective of what we're going to talk about, whether it's a kindergarten class with young engineers or ahoy paloi, the activity isn't the focal point, which I am deeply enamored with what you guys do, it's what they're learning about themselves through the opportunities at school, and learning how to reflect on it. In other words, the learning outcome for the student is a teachable, learnable activity. We talk about it all the time, "Reflect on this," as if it's intuitive and we don't have, you have to learn how to do that. It's called metacognition, thinking about thinking. It's not appropriate for a five-year-old. They can't do it, their prefrontal cortex hasn't been developed. This is high-end learning stuff. This isn't just about a bunch of series of activities. But teaching that and developing these outcomes early and streaming them along is called the learning progression, meaning I can use the same learning outcomes for my kindergartners as I can for my 11th graders. I'm just going to ask different stuff and expect different levels and outcomes. The learning progression is measurable, it's incremental, and it's over the course of the student's career, which is why we need to think cohesively about our activities. There is a correlation between chamber singers and young engineers. It's up to us to sequence those activities so that the kids can see the sequence. There's a learning and a design model. Any good design engineering course will tell you that there's a specific model, and this is not, again, a checklist, and it's not K to 12, K to grade three, we do one and two, three and four, this is recursive. From developing a club and seeing a club enacted in through the building, through a young group of students, developing their own plan of action. Just understand that those last four stages, from reflection to advocacy, is the highest of the high form of learning on any hierarchy or taxonomy that you choose to live. We're talking about evaluate, we're talking about create, we're talking about invent. This is the highest level that every single student in Rockville Center can perform, given the right circumstances. The goal of service learning is to provide those circumstances at the right place and time. How do we know what we're doing? I did mention the word curriculum, right?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
We did. So we take a look at what we're doing, what are our students engaging in? We have students engaged in leadership, in developing clubs. We've seen students propose new proposals for clubs, extracurricular activities, student responses through surveys in activities that they're leading, looking at each level, elementary, middle, high school. And those are our points of pride, that we know what's going well in those avenues for us. We look at where we need to grow, we take that into consideration, we set goals for ourselves. So, we know we need to, like we've talked about, a curriculum, looking at it, again, not as a series of check the box, giving ourselves a grade. We had a 90%, 100%. It's not about that, it's about developing our children's sense of autonomy and who they are, and where they see themselves in the community. But in order for that, we need to have a scope and a sequence and a curriculum, an alignment of our efforts and where they lead us into the community. Developing pathways, looking at those seals of civic readiness, seals of, in terms of graduations and pathways, so looking at the courses we offer, which we've taken a look at in terms of our curriculum, courses that are opportunities for our kids at the high school, at the middle school, even clubs at the elementary, and all of that. Again, it's avoiding that check the box mentality for us. True belonging for our kids comes when you feel valued, when you feel connected, when you feel empowered, when your voice is heard to contribute something greater than yourself. Service learning helps you, the children, feel connected, when you feel that you're giving something that's just different than just checking the box, than taking a test. Opportunities to engage in something that's deeper, that gives back to the community. So when you participate in clubs that allow you to celebrate your strengths, such as the dance club, the Red Cross, the backyard players, the Veterans Affairs, when you give to the community through the soup kitchen, when you show your strengths in the woodshop, all of this develop your leadership skills, allow you to find your purpose and contribute. John Dewey once said, "Education is not preparation for life, education is life itself." Service learning embodies this philosophy by making learning an active, purposeful, student-driven experience, one that fosters a lifetime of civic engagement.
So if we're going to look at this as curriculum and learning opportunities, how do we know what we're doing? How do we know what's working, and how do we know where we need to go? I'm going to beg your indulgence, and now we're going to turn it over to the kids, and I'm going to say, we've all taken quizzes, we've all taken tests, we've all taken assessments. Consider what we're about to hear and see, the assessment itself. In other words, kids thinking about their own thinking, right? There's no grading rubric, there's no grading criteria, this is kids talking off the cuff about themselves. And I will apologize to the kids, to the students who are here already, I'm letting the kindergartners go first, tough act to follow, I know, right? It's like following Hendrix in Woodstock. But what we're going to do is age-appropriately ask the kids to talk about what they've learned, that's it. And then I'm going to give it over to Mr. Beinlich, and we're going to talk about Wood Design and Chamber Singers, all right? Okay. Thank you, I see, okay.
How do you feel when you finally accomplish or finally finish a really tough task or really tough project? How do you feel when you're finished?
Happy.
Why?
Because I'm so proud of myself.
All right, girls, is it easier to work alone or to work together?
Together.
Why?
Because it's easier.
Because you're helping people to figure out.
Oh, anything else?
It would get done quicker.
Can you remember a time when working together made something easier or more fun?
More fun.
When?
When we're in Future Engineers.
All right, girls, what do you do when you have a problem and you don't know how to solve it?
You ask your sister or your brother, your mom and your dad.
Okay, what about if we're at Future Engineers?
You can ask your teacher or a friend.
You try to figure it out with a friend, and if it doesn't work, you can tell a grown-up that you trust him.
You try it forced by yourself and then you're ass.
How do you feel when you finally accomplish?
It would get done quicker.
Can you remember a time when working together made something easier or more fun?
More fun.
When?
When we're in Future Engineers.
All right, girls, what do you do when you have a problem and you don't know how to solve it?
You ask your sister or your brother, your mom and your dad.
Okay, what about if we're at Future Engineers?
You can ask your teacher or a friend.
You try to figure it out with a friend, and if it doesn't work, you can tell a grown-up that you trust him.
You try it forced by yourself and then you're ass.
Eli, do you think it's easier to play or build with a friend or to build by yourself?
With a friend.
Why?
Because then it could stay up with even more.
Jack, what do you think? Is it easier to build with a friend or to build by yourself?
With a friend.
Why?
Because they help you.
Is it better to build and work together or to build and work alone? What do you, how do you feel when you finally finish something really tricky?
Proud.
Yeah, why?
Because I did something really hard.
Yeah. What helps you when you do something hard?
When you follow instructions.
Yeah, following instructions. What else can help you if something's hard?
You ask a trusted adult.
Yeah, that's a great one.
You guys are cute too. You are, you're adorable. I am going to give it over though, and this is going to be unscripted, and Mr. Beinlich is going to be the adult in the room for a second, who's going to, I'm sorry, they're closer, is going to introduce Wood Design and talk about their work, and then we'll talk a little bit about Chamber Singers, okay?
Hello, everybody. My name is David Beinlich. I teach Wood Design here at the high school. I also am the advisor for the Wood Design Club. Aside from personal projects, all my students in the club or the class also get the opportunity to participate in numerous community projects. In the past, we've done elementary school projects, we've made probably close to 1,000 snowmen. But also, we've done other stuff too that we haven't really talked about. We've partnered with organizations to design, plan, and produce products to assist them in fundraising. in fundraising. We've done this for Camp Anchor, done this for Camp Sunshine. Just recently, we entered into this partnership with the Sandell Center and it's been absolutely amazing. Last year, we had seniors from the Sandell Center come into my classroom and with students, they actually were able to, I don't want to give too much away because these guys have something to say, but talk about that in a second. And just this past November, we participated in an event over at the Sandell Center and it was a huge success. But to give everyone the lowdown on what went down, I have Nicholas Mitchell and Sabrina Nardella to enlighten.
Hello, members of school board, faculty, and fellow community members. We're honored to speak today about the significant impact that community events and partnerships have had on our school district. One of the most rewarding experiences we've had this year was visiting the Sandell Senior Citizen Center for their holiday boutique. During this event, we created and sold a variety of wooden items ranging from small coasters to large signs. Many of these pieces were designed with the Rockville Center community in mind, which allowed us to contribute something special and personalized to our town. Meeting with the community and hearing the feedback was incredibly rewarding and it helped us connect on a deeper level with the people we serve. In addition to this, we've been working with local businesses like Slider Joe's. We are in talks with them to create wooden sign items, which gives us opportunity to apply our woodworking skills and gain real-world business experience. This collaboration helps us see how our classroom learning can translate into meaningful projects that can benefit the local community.
Another exciting project we've been involved in is with the kindergarten students. We've been working together on a winter project where we help them create wooden snowmen that are the same height as they are. This project is fun and an educational way for older students to connect with the younger students. We're always also looking forward to collaborating, my goodness, with the first graders on another project in the spring, which we will continue to strengthen our connections with the younger students and foster creativity in the classroom. The Rockville Center School District has taught us how to build a community of learners that extends far beyond the classroom. Whether through partnerships with local businesses, working with younger students, or engaging with senior citizens, these experiences are shaping us into individuals who understand the importance of collaboration, respect, and shared learning.
Reflecting on all these experiences, I've realized, or we've realized, how much they've influenced our understanding of community and personal growth. When we come together, whether it's through business partnerships, school projects, or local events, we build something much stronger than we could ever achieve alone. Thank you for your time and consideration.
But wait, there's more. Speaking on behalf of chamber singers, Kaylee and Tatum will give a little bit of an insight into terms of another form of service learning that the high school experiences.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Rashudi.
And I'm Tatum Gallagher.
And we're here to talk about community outreach with chamber singers. We have some fan favorites that we do every single year that allow us to sing and also talk with people in our community. One of those events is the intergenerational sharing conference at the Sandell Center in December. We always sing our concert program for them and then we spend time just hanging out with them. We all sing carols and sometimes even dance. And that's kind of really awesome and we always like to ask them how music has played a part in their lives and they always have something super fun and just awesome and heartwarming usually to say. And just kind of goes to show like how much music really plays a part in people's lives and that kind of connection that you create with people through music.
We're also so lucky to get invited every year to sing at the Mount Sinai South Nassau Hospital, which is really extra special because we, I mean, we've met so many people from Rockville Center who work there or people who are visiting, loved ones, and it's really special to be able to do that and to just like, just make people's day with music. I mean, we've had so many people come up to us and just tell us how much it meant to them that we would come out. And we usually sing Christmas carols or holiday carols and we do our concert repertoire in the two lobbies of the hospital. And it's just really an amazing gift to be able to do that for people. Also, we sing at a lot of school community events such as the National Honor Society inductions, senior awards nights, graduation, and even we've sang here at the board of ed meetings. And that's also something really special that we get to share with the school, what we've been working on throughout the years. And it's really just a great community, like being in that class. It's not only like a break from like your other classes, but it's just like you get, making music with other people is just such a special thing that a lot of people don't realize if they don't get to do it and it's really, it's really amazing. And also through chamber singers, students have the option to need to sing the National Anthem at various events such as like the Memorial Day, 9/11 service, and sports events. We love giving back to the middle school community, which is one of my favorite things to do because it, as a middle schooler, seeing the chamber singers come to the middle school, it kind of showed me that like, I can do that too. Like, I love music and I want to do that. Like, I just, I think it's really cool to be able to show people like, not only is it possible to do that, but it's encouraged. Like, you should be able to do the things that you love. And we sing at the tree lighting. And just chamber singers, the class in general, has given a really great new perspective on the impact we're able to make in our community.
So, here is what some of the members of chamber singers say about what they've learned while serving our community. When we go to the middle school, we show them that they can make music when they get older and how they can work with other people. I remember seeing chamber singers caroling and it made me want to get involved in music. Someone else said, "I feel like going to these events sparks a connection between us and them as listeners." People have a set idea and when they see us and hear that, hear us sing, that idea might change and make us develop a stronger bond. Especially with the Sandell Center, we interact with a different group of people and we show them that music is important to us, just like it's important to them, even though we're from different generations. Someone else said, "Our singing helps people. You never know what they're going through and it could brighten someone's day."
I mean, we've sang for so many of the teachers in different areas, we've sang in the lobbies before and, I mean, we have made other teachers cry, which, hopefully happy tears, but it's-
Dr. Friling always says, she's like, "You did your job if someone cried."
It's a really special thing to really just evoke that kind of emotion from somebody just by doing something that you genuinely enjoy doing. It's not, it's not a chore or a task. It's fun and it's enjoyable and it's something that we all love to do.
And for me personally, I really just love kind of being reminded of how our music makes people feel. Like, when we go to the hospital and we see people, just like we gather a crowd and people are recording and we're like, "Are we really that good?" And it's like, no. It's like, I mean, like, we're just, we're making music and sharing this kind of connection that can't really be shared otherwise. And it really just warms our hearts, or my heart specifically. Yeah, just to see that people really care what we're offering them through our music. Yeah, so thank you so much for supporting arts education in Rockville Center. We think we're doing really important outreach in what we're learning in chamber singers. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Again, wow. Two words come to mind, just, I have written down here, grateful and proud. So, I can tell you happy tears are happening. We're grateful for all of you for being here tonight. We're grateful to your teachers. We're grateful for you sharing your experiences. And I know that, we know that you reflect so many other classmates and students that are not here with us tonight and you make us proud. So, thank you and great job and thanks for sharing tonight. Mr. Beinlich, thanks for being here. Mr. Gavin, you want to add anything?
I think what we see here tonight is that connection to a community. It's around different things, but that same sense of community that we have in chamber singers, and I see it when I've gone to rehearsals, I've seen it, you feel it. I see in Mr. Beinlich's classroom as well. I see that same sense of community. Kids go to his classroom on their free periods. Kids go to Dr. Friling on their free periods, when they don't need to be there. And they do that to get better at something they love, whether it's extra rehearsal, whether it's a question, whether it's for you guys. I, you know, I messed up this one, this one piece of my project, now how can I fix it? And I just want to reiterate, what a special, I've been in the wood shop a lot. So, one of the seniors they were talking about showing, they might have been talking about me. So, I hope, I hope I'm not quite a senior yet, all right? So, let's just chill. But, for the most part, I mean, Ike went in there to learn about how to use the laser engraver. And these guys are the ones that taught me. Mr. Beinlich gave me some, like, you have to log in, you got to do this, but like, these guys are the ones that taught me. And they taught me and they were proud to teach me. They were proud to have a skill that allows them to be creative in new ways. And so, I'm super proud, super proud of both our chamber singers and our wood design and our kindergarten engineers. Don't forget our kindergarten engineers. They're only in video, but they were pretty cute. And I think this is what the board had in mind when they talked about creating community partnerships. Our students are our best ambassadors. They create community around so many different things and that also leads back to our other board goal, enhancing outcomes and opportunities. These are opportunities. They have taken advantage of these opportunities. They have teachers that help them understand what that opportunity is and how to grasp it. And that to me is super, super important. It makes me proud to be the superintendent of Rockville Center Schools, as do all of you. Thank you.
We're going to segue into our budget presentation, so I'm not asking you to leave, but you're welcome to go home and do homework if you have to. Thank you again and congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And as Mr. Murphy returns to his spot, we will thank him and Ms. Dalton as well for the presentation. Yes, thank you very much. Our second presentation this evening is our budget presentation. Mr. Gavin?
Tonight begins the first of our budget discussion. We started that in terms of what the tax levy calculation would look like in the last meeting. This meeting now, we're really starting to talk and delve into our budget process. Ms. Rehack will be walking us through all of the different specifics. I just want to remind everyone that this is the beginning part of where the budget is. It's not where the end is because we still have a lot of moving pieces that still need to come together. But I'd like to introduce Ms. Rehack, who will walk us through our first presentation.
Thank you. That's a tough presentation to follow, but I'll do my best. So, the first part, we're just going to go over the budget schedule. I did touch upon this last time. In the fall, we start, you know, inputting everything from the budget that we get from all the district administrators, from the buildings. By January, I start to review and finalize the first draft with the superintendent. And then, on January 23rd, we had our first public budget presentation, which really just went over the general environment and the tax cap calculation. Tonight, it's February 26th. This is our first budget discussion, diving a little deeper, and we're going to look at the administration, the benefits, and the capital sections of the budget. Then on March 1st, our tax cap calculation is due to OSC, so we'll be filing that this week. We're currently, where we were last time, our tax cap calculation comes in at 2.61% and our levy that we're looking at is within the tax cap. On March 13th, we have the budget discussion on curriculum and PPS, and then on March 27th, music and arts and PE and athletics. By April 10th, that's our preliminary budget hearing. That will be the last opportunity for any changes to the budget by that date. And then May 8th, we have our formal budget hearing, and then on May 20th, the annual election and budget vote. So, tonight, we're going to go over our budget summary, the financial health of the district, the budget history, some budget highlights, some factors for the current year, for '25-'26, the revenue picture, and then dive into the administrative benefits and capital sections of the budget. So, first, if we just look at the summary, this is where we are currently, of course, as Mr. Gavin said, it is subject to change. We still have private and parochial transportation applications that aren't due until April 1st, so that always can affect the budget. Also, while we did receive the governor's budget in January, the legislative budget usually doesn't come out till April, so that could also drive changes in the budget. So, this is where we are right now, but I'll keep the board and the public apprised as we round this out over the next month. The budget right now for '25-'26 is $140,289,187. That's a 1.92% budget-to-budget increase from the current year '24-'25. So, how do we fund that? The biggest part of funding the budget is the tax levy at $109,240,000. That's a 2.6%, which is within that 2.61% tax cap. For state aid, right now, we're projecting $20,278,187. That's a 2.35% increase and is based on the governor's budget, which included a 2% increase in foundation aid and some other increases in some of the expense-based aids. As we know, our expenses has gone up, for example, transportation or BOCs, so it does have some other increases in there as well. Then we have other revenue of just over $7 million at $7,171,000. This includes interest income, pilot payments, project grade, and non-resident tuition. We are expecting this revenue to decrease and what's really driving that decrease is the non-resident tuition. We're projecting it to go down over $400,000 and this is due to, kids coming from out of district into our schools is going to drop as we see kids graduating out of the core program. So, due to attrition, we are going to see a decrease in that revenue. We continue to use reserves, applied fund balance is $2.8 million. This is from the '24-'25 year and this is a give back to the taxpayers of what we can give back of the current year. As we continue to look at fund balance over the next month too, this number is subject to change as well because of course, we have to have those funds available to be able to put it towards next year's budget. We also are projecting $800,000 to use of ERS and TRS reserves to offset some of the increases that we're going to see in ERS and TRS and to be consistent with the prior year of what we've expected to use in this year and in previous years. So, that's the grand total funding to balance out the budget of $140,289,187. So, just to go a little further into state aid, as I said, we were looking at a 2.35% increase based on the governor's budget and that included a 2% increase in foundation aid. So, in this chart, the top line, that brown line, is really total state aid. So, you can see how it's fluctuated over the past several years. And same with foundation aid, which is that next line, that blue line. So, foundation aid, you'll see jumped up in '23-'24. This was when foundation aid was fully funded because for a while, the state wasn't fully funding the districts based on the formula. And then in '23-'24, they did fully fund foundation aid. So, a lot of districts experienced this jump. We don't expect to see that jump again because now it's fully funded, so it'll just be more incremental increases like the other aids. The other aids are really expense-based aids, so they increase based on how our expenditures increase. And you'll see they increase a little bit over time, but a lot does remain somewhat consistent. The one aid you'll see decreasing is that purple line, which is building aid because we do have some projects falling off. Next, we'll look at the financial health of the district, which is really looking at annual fund balance. Fund balance is made up of three components, three parts. We have the yellow bars, which is applied appropriated fund balance, the green bar, which is undesignedated, unappropriated, unassigned fund balance, and then the blue bar, which is reserved fund balance. That fund balance is established reserves, that the money in those reserves are established for a specific purpose, an intended purpose like ERS, TRS, unemployment, and can only be used for those intended purposes. That's why they're reserved. You'll see when you go through this, we talked about this, I know a little last month as well, you see in '22-'23, that yellow bar jump up. That's our appropriated applied fund balance. So, this was planned for the district to use appropriated fund balance for that middle school field and roof project. So, the increase was specifically to fund that project and then you see it drop down in '23-'24 as the funds were expended on that project. So, that was all part of that planning. When you look at '23-'24, you will also notice the green bar and the blue bar went up slightly. So, we did end that year pretty well. Our undesignedated fund balance was within the 4% limit and right now, we're projecting for '24-'25 to stay pretty even with '23-'24. So, if we take a look at our budget history, the comparison of our budget versus tax levy increases over the last 11 years, you'll see that blue bar is budget, the red bar is the tax levy, and you see they're pretty consistent from year to year up until, again, that '23-'24 year. You know, that becomes an anomaly as your budget jumps up, but because you're using appropriated fund balance to fund that project, your tax levy doesn't jump up with it. It remained, it remained pretty even. But now, as that- But now, as that project was done and it falls off the budget, you see your budget-to-budget drops down. So that's what causes that blue bar to jump up in the '23-'24 and then drop down in '24-'25 while levy stays pretty consistent. And now it will even out again unless you have projects that you're doing like that or something similar that would cause those anomalies to occur. So just looking at a couple of the budget highlights. So the first one is, we do zero-based budgeting, which is very important. You know, it basically means that we rebuild the budget every year based on needs, not just increasing from the prior year. So we look at every person, what building they're in, what account code they go in. And you budget them specifically for that line item and add any contractual increases that are applied to them. This has a lot of advantages, particularly in promoting financial discipline and efficiency. It forces review of each expenditure. It prevents the tendency for budgets to grow without justification for it. So when you have to look at every single line item and justify those increases. Right now, another budget highlight, all our current programs are being rolled forward and we'll have some new ones, which I'll talk about in a minute. And capital projects. I mean, we've had capital projects for the last few years, but the ability to incorporate the necessary work to maintain our buildings creates a successful learning environment. Maintaining our buildings is critical. It creates safe spaces conducive to learning. Leaky roofs, broken HVACs or outdated classrooms can really be disruptive to learning. I can imagine if a roof started leaking in the middle of the classroom, that would cause an issue. So being able to have this in our budget and constantly maintain our buildings, it becomes very important. It helps us meet health and safety standards, and it's also a long-term investment. We have buildings that are almost 100 years old. So the maintenance of these buildings and these smaller capital projects become a preventative measure to reduce more costly repairs that could occur down the road. So being able to continue to keep that consistent from year to year becomes really important in the budget. So a couple of the new programs in the budget highlights. I know Mr. Gavin has presented on these in previous months, so I know you're aware of most of these. But we've talked about the College Connection Classes, the Bloomberg with Malloy College, where students will get real-time certification, access to Bloomberg terminals. We have the Computational Engineering Program with Hofstra, which gives students access to engineering software used by professionals. And they get four opportunities to go onsite at Hofstra to do this. We also have additional AP opportunities. We're piloting a cybersecurity. And we'll have human geography opportunities in grades nine through 11. We also have a few inclusive opportunities. We just spoke about the Challenger Basketball. We'll also have Unified Theater and Unified Bowling. And then in athletics, we have incorporated the Varsity Field Hockey. So some of the budget factors that are driving the '25-'26 budget. I mean, one of the largest ones that I know has been discussed year over year for the past few years is health insurance premiums. You know, we were very happily surprised just in January '25 when our rate increase was only 1.2% for actives and 3.8% for retirees. I was actually waiting to get a second notice that told me they made a mistake, but luckily, that did not happen. But if you look at the last five years, we did have over 36% in increases, an average of 7.2%. Our highest was 15.2% and the lowest was the 3.5%. And up until this year, 1.2% for actives, both 3.8% for retirees. So you can see also just the margin from the lowest to the highest and the unpredictability of health insurance and what that can do to your budget. And I'll go over that a little more later in the slides. But so right now, we're budgeting 10% increase for health insurance for half the year, beginning January 1st-'26. So our rate increases occur in January of each year. So we know what it is for the first six months of the fiscal year, but we don't know what it is for the second six months. So that's what we've included in the budget. Another driving factor is transportation. Transportation contracts, we've been fortunate to extend all of our contracts from the current year into next year. And I say fortunate because the increase on those contracts will be CPI. CPI for '24-'25 was 3.9%. We're projecting for '25-'26 to 4%. But the reason I say we're fortunate is because a lot of districts what they're experiencing right now is very large hikes in transportation. Our main in-district provider, we are in a three-year contract right now. I believe we have two years left. But once that contract expires, I am expecting to see the hike that so many other districts are experiencing. And you're looking at, as you see for BOSEs, which I put on here, 30% increase for BOSEs. That's because their main provider increased them 30%. I know in my previous district, we experienced a 45% increase on our last RFP. And that's what I'm hearing across the board, that districts are seeing 30% to 45% to 50% increases in their transportation contracts. So this is a huge line on the budget and something that we'll have to plan into for the coming years and start conversations with our main provider to see if that's something that is going to affect us. But luckily for next year, we are looking, we do have everything extended. And like I said, we estimate at 4%. We do have the 30% increase for BOSEs. And then we do have some added routes that will drive up transportation costs as well for private schools and out-of-district placements. Other factors in the '25-'26 budget, our general insurance premium, that's our liability, our auto insurance, umbrella, that is an increase of 15%. We also had a large increase last year. We did get these numbers from NYSER. They told us to expect another 15% increase. So that's what we're including in the budget. We also have an increase in our out-of-district placements, which have increased some tuition expenditures. And like everyone else, we also are experiencing inflation and increased costs in supplies and services. Some factors that give us some relief in the budget are interest income. Interest income, as you know, years ago, we got very, very little in interest income and it shot up a couple of years ago. And it's pretty much stayed up. It is decreasing slightly. There is a schedule to decrease over the next several years, but it's coming down much more slowly, which is making it a little more predictable for next year. So that is a help in the budget. Also, project grade is still going strong. We have pilots that we receive that we expect our pilot. That includes money we get in lieu of taxes for the Avalon Apartments and things like that. That did go up $100,000 from last year. And up until the pilot expires, it should continue to go up a little bit each year. And we also have the ability, which we've been doing, to create some new program offerings while still utilizing our existing staff for the programs we discussed. So now, looking at our revenue picture, the tax levy, as I mentioned, the tax cap for '25-'26 is 2.61%. Again, we'll be under the tax cap. We're projecting an increase of 2.6% in the tax levy. Our state aid is budgeted based on the governor's proposal. Again, the legislative proposal, the legislative budget comes out in April. So once we get that, if we need to make adjustments, we will. We don't typically see decreases from the governor's budget to the legislative budget. So I usually am pretty comfortable budgeting the governor's budget numbers. Usually, we may get an increase, but not much. It's not usually a big difference at that time. So, but we'll keep an eye on that and see if we need to make any adjustments come April. We do have that 2% increase in foundation aid. As we do have some older projects dropping off, we're going to have a decrease in building aid. And our BOSEs aid is increasing also a little bit because we have had more expenses we do through BOSEs to get that aid and maximize what the district is getting back. Again, interest income is significant. We have $900,000 in the budget, which is the same as what we had in '24-'25. Like I said, rates are starting to slowly come down, but we are projecting to end '24-'25 around $1.2 million in interest. So 900 might be slightly conservative, but with rates coming down, you know, it just is a more comfortable place to keep the budget. For Project Grade Program, as I said, it's strong, it's consistent. We're budgeting $700,000 for '25-'26, which is the same as '24-'25. Our pilot payments going up at $100,000. And then the decrease in our out-of-district students in our district special ed programs comes out to about $460,000. This is the administrative component of the budget. This includes the Board of Education, which they're responsible for the budget vote every year. So it's not, board members are volunteers, so it's not salaries, but it is expenses related to the Board of Education, the superintendent's office, business office, auditing, legal expenses, personnel, public information, data processing, administrative software, printing and mailing, all our general insurances, liability, auto, umbrella, student accident and cyber, and our BOSEs administrative costs. So one of the things that goes out very close to the budget is the six-day notice, the budget notice that gets mailed to all the taxpayers' homes. On that notice, you have to include a three-part components. That's the administrative component, the capital component and the program component. So you'll see the administrative component, when you get that in the mail, will be higher than this number because one of the things that's allocated to all the components is benefits. So for purposes of this presentation, we're reporting benefits as its own category so that the board and the public can see what benefits is made up of. But when you finalize your budget and you send out that notice, those benefits have to get allocated to those three different parts. So it will be a higher number when you get that notice in the mail because it will be increased for its share of benefits related to personnel in the administrative budget. So some significant changes in this part of the budget include, as I mentioned, the insurance costs. The 15% premium increases is $143,000. It's our third year, 15% or more in premium increases. And this is getting driven by actual claims. Our provider, as you know, is NYSER. They are a non-for-profit, unlike many other providers. So if we're getting increases, it is due to real claims. It doesn't mean real claims necessarily of Rockville Center School District. It means real claims of all the districts included in this cooperative. So, and this NYSER was created for schools because of so many hikes they were getting in insurance from private companies and companies that need to make a profit. That's what drove NYSER, you know, many years ago. But now, they have experienced a lot of claims in the past several years, which is now hitting all the districts. So we are experiencing a third year of 15% or more increases. We also added excess cyber insurance. We added that in the current year, so we already have it, but it's new to the budget. So it is an increase from budget to budget, and that's $65,000. We also have higher BOSEs administration fees due to increased costs and more services through BOSEs. So the next section we'll talk about is the transportation budget. So our transportation budget is $6,409,284. Transportation is part of actually the program component of the budget. So that's where this will end up in that three-part component. The increase from '24-'25 budget is approximately $905,000 or 16.5%. We do have some district transportation. We have a few in-district buses that drive some of our special ed vans around with a few drivers and matrons. It includes, this includes the drivers, the maintenance, our maintenance inspections, our routing software and our bus passes. We also have contract transportation in there, as I said, estimated CPI at 4%. This is for our in-district, large buses, private and parochial schools, late buses, field trips, athletic team buses. Then we do have some public transportation, Long Island Railroad and NYSER. We really, I don't know the last time we've used NYSER, mostly Long Island Railroad. And that's for students maybe going into the city or out east St. Anthony's that get public transportation. We do provide transportation for private and parochial up to 15 miles. So they'll get 15 miles from stop to stop of a Long Island Railroad pass. We also have BOSEs transportation, which is provided from BOSEs to BOSEs, by BOSEs to BOSEs schools. And that transportation, we're experiencing the 30% increase. So some of the significant changes, the main in-district contracts are up $345,000. That's due to CPI changes. That's also due, we had to add two new buses this year going to Covert for our self-contained classes. We also, in the budget, have an additional bus for career ed. We're not adding a bus for career ed. I'll talk about that in a second on this last bullet here. But we are moving it to our in-district provider. And we're actually doing that to generate savings. And then also, we have private and special ed placements are up $434,000 due to CPI and additional private placements. We have additional field trip allocations for CPI and the College Connection courses that we're adding. And then a net reduction of $40,000 in BOSEs. So as I said, BOSEs is going up 30%. But we started looking at all our routes in BOSEs to see how we can, you know, make some changes and maybe get some money back. And our career ed was really going to cost us a lot more money than if we just went through our own private transportation that we have through Guardian. So we reached out to Guardian about it. We do have a contract we can use with Guardian. And it would have been over $300,000 to continue it with BOSEs. And we did get it reduced to approximately $115,000. So we have a $200,000 savings for the career ed, but a 30% increase on all the budgets, so all the other BOSEs. So that nets to that $40,000 reduction. Next is our youth program and community services, which is about 100, makes up about $157,000 of the budget. This is recreation. It's mostly our custodial overtime for opening buildings for the community groups, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, sports we have, basketball, and, you know, any other community or building PTA activities going on at the nights and weekends. Our youth programs, we do open the buildings for youth sports and have custodians onsite when they're here. Also for civic activities, census, mailings and supplies. These budgets are reduced slightly to reflect what the actual expenditures have been from year to year more accurately, and they've been pretty consistent for the past few years. So we reduced it slightly to reflect that. The recreation and youth programs are two of the few and most impactful budget items. And if for any reason the district was to be on a contingent budget, these would be items that would be removed because overtime is something that's not allowed in a contingent budget. So just something to mention because it would impact these two programs. This is the benefits budget. So this is the one that I said gets allocated to all the three parts. So there is $33,585,900 in the benefits budget. This includes TRS, ERS, social security, FICA, workers' comp, unemployment, health insurance and other contractual benefits we have, life, dental, vision. Some of the changes in our benefits budget include the ERS budget increased by $200,000 and TRS, we increased by $85,000, both due to increased rates and based on projections in the current year to cover any differences we needed there and then to adjust for increased rates for next year. The FICA budget increased by $100,000 to cover contractual increases. Health insurance is up $524,500 due to that projected premium increase of 10% for the half-year starting January 1st-'26. And our other contractual benefits we have in the budget will remain flat. So I just wanted to go back to health insurance for a little bit. I know I'm belaboring it a little bit, but just so you can see a better picture of what's been happening with rates and why it's so unpredictable. So it was pretty consistent for a few years, you know, ranging roughly around that 5%. A couple of years, a little higher or a little lower. But then you'll see all of a sudden, '19 through '22, it dropped down. So we probably created some kind of cushion in the budget during those years when it dropped down. But it was a good thing because then we had those major increases in '23 through '25. So those increases, it really helped us in the budget to be able to get through those years, you know. So you try to be consistent, but you see how it can go from, you know, getting some, actually getting reduced in a year to jumping up to 20% for certain categories. So the blue, the green line is individual coverage premiums. The blue line is family. They pretty much, for the most part, go hand in hand. The purple line is many-prime. Those are for retirees over 65 on Medicare. Medicare at that point becomes their primary and this becomes their secondary. So those rates were pretty low up until 2023, when all of a sudden, it really jumped up to adjust. But so that one's been unpredictable. But I wanted to look a little bit at just the total premium increases. If you average them all out and put them together, you can see more where the dips and jumps are here and how unpredictable it's been for about the past six years compared to all the years prior to that, where that line was pretty stable. These are employer contribution rates for ERS and TRS. You can see TRS has actually been pretty stable for the last several years. ERS has been a little less predictable. You can see some dips from '23 and then going back up from '25 and '26. So TRS has been easier to plan for, ERS a little less. So, but we've been keeping up with that in our budget, I think, is in a pretty good place for when it did go down and go back up. Now we'll move into the capital budget. In our capital budget, this includes facilities, buildings and grounds, maintenance, security staff. It includes our tax anticipation notes, our lease and purchase. It includes our tax anticipation notes, our lease and purchase agrees agreement for musical instruments that we get through BOSI's, our debt service on previous bonds and the EPC, and our transfer to capital for capital projects. So the changes, we do have an increase in security of about $100,000. I know we had an increase last year in the budget as well, and this was part of that plan into security. I know it was discussed last year as well that we would continue to see this increase as we made some investments and changes in the district's security. So that is continuing. Our TAM projection remains the same as the interest rates are expected to remain pretty flat or even decrease a little bit. So, but we do expect that to come in roughly about the same. A TAM is borrowing that we do for, we only get tax levy. As you know, everyone pays tax levy twice a year for their real estate taxes, and we also only collect it twice a year. So it comes in in November and May of each year. And for cash flow purposes, at times, your cash flow may run low while you're waiting for that tax levy to come in. So in that time period, you'll borrow what's called a tax anticipation note, and you have to pay interest on it. It's a short-term loan, so that when your tax levy does come in, you pay it back, and now the loan goes away. So it really is a loan that you carry for a few months, and that's it. Our other debt service is flat. Our next drop in debt service is in the 2028-29 school year. As you know, we have the EPC that we're still paying debt service on. And then it looks like there was a, a large bond that probably went out for voter approval in around the 12-13 year. And there were two sets borrowing in 2014 and '16. So those are still on, on the books for several years. I believe they were 30-year bonds. Our transfer to capital is remaining at 1.8 million. And we'll talk a little about, about what's included in that transfer, transfer to capital. I also did include on these sides, you'll see on a couple items, I have in parenthetical, equipment budget. Just because I thought it was important to note some of the equipment we are buying. But it's not part of that 1.8 million. It's part of our equipment budget that's in our regular budget and our 200 object codes. So for covert, we are planning to repair and repave the blacktop area to renovate a classroom bathroom to be ADA compliant. We are looking to replace the kindergarten playground, the turf and fencing. We did apply for a New York State grant for this. So hopefully we'll get that grant, and it will reduce some of those costs. So we, we already sent the application in, but I know through DASNY, it takes some time before we'll hear back. So I'll, I'll keep you all updated on that. We also have a new snowplow, new snowplow in the equipment budget. And I actually should have said this first. I'm sorry I didn't. The way we, you know, plan for the capital budget, as I understand, there are two building walkthroughs in all the buildings with the board and the administration during the year, I believe in August every year, and then again in January. So that, that way you really have an idea of what's going on in the buildings, what needs repairs. I'm sure there's a lot more looked at and reviewed and then prioritized to see what we need to do now, what we can plan for in the next coming years, and then larger projects that may require a bond or something else. But, and we keep that list, we maintain it, and we look at it to make these decisions for budget purposes. So I should have said that before I went into covert, I'm sorry. For Hewitt, we are looking to add air conditioning in the auditorium, a new library entrance door, repair and refinish the health office floor, add a bottle filling station in the equipment budget. That will replace a drinking water fountain. In Riverside, we're looking at some major repairs on the exterior walls, the brick pointing there, prevent any water from coming in. So we have a bunch of exterior walls on the building, and most importantly, the gym exterior walls. So that's something that is in the 1.8 million to be done. Next, we have Watson. We're looking to repair and refinish the front facade and the steps and replace classroom doors on four of the classrooms. I know we started that in previous years, and we'll continue to replace the doors as time goes on. In Wilson, we'll repair and repave the blacktop area as well. We will repair and refinish the kitchen floor, renovate the hallway kindergarten bathroom. We're doing some ceiling and lighting upgrades in five classrooms, repair and refinish the floors in three classrooms. Next, we have Southside Middle School. This building, I know when you walk through, we probably have a long list of projects here. Some of them are larger, the ones that really we need to tackle right away, we are addressing. And we're keeping that list of the other things that we need to do. Capital, as you know, is an exemption to the tax levy. So when we add capital projects, it actually increases the tax levy dollar to dollar. So when we look at this, we're also trying to be mindful to our taxpayers and how much we actually put in this. So we're not driving up tax dollars to, to do all these projects. But, so we look at everything again and prioritize what's needed. So in the middle school, we have flooring replacements and repair, repairs for one classroom and the test center. We're repairing and repointing a section of the exterior brick wall. Remember, in the middle school, we did the roof and the field. So we did, to prevent water from coming in, we replaced the roof. And now we've been doing sections of the brick, exterior brick walls over time. So I know some was done in the prior year, and we're continuing that in the current year budget. Adding two bottle filling stations in the equipment budget and new entrance floor mats in the equipment budget. In the high school, we're looking to replace the science room air conditioning, replace the air filtration system in the woodshop, replace the school sign is in the equipment budget, adding six bottle filling stations as part of the equipment budget, and replacing the air conditioning in the cafeteria with some larger units. Then we have Greenhouse. We are planning to do ceiling and lighting upgrades in Greenhouse. And then district-wide, we're continuing flexible furniture upgrades in all the buildings. I know this has been done in the past few years, and we're continuing that initiative. Continuing two-way radio replacements in our, in our equipment budget. We're also looking at a new stand-on blower, a new mower, and new landscape trailer in the equipment budget. And that is everything I have on the budget for tonight. So I look forward to answering any questions you have.
Thank you very much for a very comprehensive overview of where we're at, at this point in the budget process. I'll turn it over to board members for questions and comments.
Thank you. I appreciated all of your comments and taking us through how it will look different as we go through this process, right? This is a snapshot in time. All of these figures, many of them will be fluid depending on the state aid runs. Have there been any new state aid runs in the last few days? Or is there any movement on those figures?
Yeah, so they do another run. It, it doesn't come in the same place that it comes in as the governor's budget. So you have to, the schools have access to it through, through our state reporting system. And so we did have a February run, and it was pretty consistent. I did see an increase in transportation aid because I made some adjustments to our projected transportation expenses. So that, I was expecting it to change. I was hoping, because there's a timeline to get things in, and if they'd be reflected, they did reflect an increase for entering that. So I was pleasantly surprised with that, and that's the only change since January.
And I'm sure so many districts are seeing huge increases, as you noticed, as you mentioned, in transportation specifically.
Seeing huge increase in transportation expenses, and, and yes, the aid too. But one of the things districts are experiencing, and, and us too in Rockville Center, is the wealth ratios are going up, which actually, on the reverse, can drive down aid a little bit. And that's based on your home sales in your district. So in the past few years, we have seen home sale prices going up, which is making the district seem more wealthy. So our wealth ratio did go up slightly, which actually, so while it's increasing because your actual expenditures are increasing, your net ratio is going down a little bit. So what you're getting of what you're expending is a little less because of your combined wealth ratio.
Right, so if the governor's prioritizing high-need districts over average-need districts, we, we need to be advocating for ourselves, right? So, I mean, that's, that's what we do as a board. There are parts of this budget that are in our control, and so many that are not within our control. As you mentioned, the ERS, TRS increases, and certainly inflation. I appreciate that we are starting these conversations with our providers in terms of buses and the insurance premiums, which are, are going through the roof. In terms of the capital projects, none of these are tremendously exciting capital projects, right? We are clearly prioritizing safety, not just increasing our own safety and security budget, but also looking for places that, as you said, they need to be safe and secure and not have any sort of dangerous situations going on. How many, in, in broad strokes of the capital projects, need to be done by outside agencies? And how many might be able to be staffed by our own workers?
So everything we included in the 1.8 million is really done by outside providers. The stuff that we do in-house is part of our regular budget. So we do have some other smaller things we're doing in spaces and classrooms that are just part of our regular facilities budget.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of expense-driven aid, that's, this is another area where we need to advocate as, as board members, right? So foundation aid is expected to lay the foundation for a basic education. But as we see our expenses going up with the transportation, with the inflation, we need to be advocating for more aid from our state. Because what qualifies for building aid is not necessarily matching up with what we are experiencing. As you mentioned, we've got buildings that are 100 years old, and they need to be safe. So I know this is a work in progress. And the one last thing I'll ask about, you mentioned health insurance premium rates. So we need to project what might happen in January? That's, that's when we know those figures for sure?
Yeah, and health insurance is really difficult. You know, TRS, things like that is usually based on market trends because it's the pension. It's in the market. So you, they, it's based on a five-year average of the market. So you can usually kind of see where it might be going. Whereas health insurance is not like that. It's based on your experience rating. And it's not even just, you know, Rockville Center School District experience rating. Because again, this is one of those big cooperatives that all, you know, these districts are in and, and government employees. So it's based on all, we all get the same increase across the board. So it's based on the experience rating of all those people. So it really, there's no way to do any predictions. And that's why it can range from 0 to 15%, you know? And you get it in the beginning of December for January. So, you know, you always want to make sure your budget's covered. If it does come in lower, like we did have a higher increase in this year's budget, and when it come in, it came in at 1.2%. Luckily, our increase for '25-'26 doesn't need to be as high because some of the cushion that's in the current year will cover that increase for the next year. So I don't, you know, I only needed to apply the actual 1.2% where my budget is, and then just account for an increase come January for six months.
Got it, thank you.
I just want to say thanks. This is, it was well explained and put together. But obviously, there was hundreds of man-hours that probably went into this behind the scenes. So thank you for the whole presentation. I also want to just say I do appreciate that you use the zero-based approach and, and really take a look at the things we're doing and how they're impacting our kids and our community, and sort of reevaluate every year if the things we're doing are still serving us in the way that we need them to. And that we're able to roll over all of our current programs and still add things for kids, I think, is also pretty noteworthy, given all of the constraints. My only real question for you is more just projecting. I know you can't project the future, obviously. But the, the rising transportation costs and just rising costs in general are a real concern for everybody and obviously for us as well. So any thoughts on ways we could creatively try to solve that problem? Or look at our roots and see if we're really efficiently running them, anything along those lines?
Yeah, I mean, that's something we always have to look at and analyze. Even if we were in, i- if we weren't as worried about future costs, you should always be doing it anyway because you really want to always be the most efficient you can be. You want to produce the best program and for the least amount of cost. You know, always try and do the most you can for less, right? So, but we also, like I said, want to have the best programs. So, but always looking at that, looking at how they're staffed, if there's adjustments we can make to run those programs, what we actually need, what we're getting out of them, cost-benefit analysis is. And we have those discussions daily, Mr. Gavin, you know, Mrs. Dalton, Ms. Moriarty, and of course, you know, over here with Mr. Murphy as well. So we talk about that, I feel like, almost daily, right? So a lot of different thoughts and ideas becomes a brainstorming session and things as we come up with them that we'll bring to the board.
And to follow up, the superintendents in my quadrant, we've also been looking at shared routes outside of BOSI's, but to BOSI's or extra, excuse me, added district placements. So it's not just us that are feeling this. We've, we've been trying to cooperate in just looking at like one particular school that we all sent somebody to. Is there a way for us to make better routes? Because one of the big complaints is not just the cost, but it's also the amount of time kids can spend on the bus. So you want to try to kind of balance both of those things at the same time and still try to provide that efficient route. So that's something that the superintendents have been looking at and trying to brainstorm different ways to try to creatively look at routes or share routes. So we've, we've been talking with Lindbrook. We've had a conversation with Island Park as well about are there ways for us to, to try to, you know, piggyback on each other's routes?
So, yeah, and, and you can do transportation as cooperatives. As Mr. Gavin is saying, some of the complexities that the districts have to coordinate on is start and ending times and how to share those routes and what those schematic looks, schematics look like. As you know, in district, that's, that's why districts have staggered start times between elementary, middle schools, high school is because of the transportation. So coordinating that among different districts really can maximize those buses. So that's something definitely that can be looked at.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. You did a great job. Honestly, it's a lot of information. I appreciated it. One of the things I also appreciate was your forecasting. So you're talking about the things that you think are coming in a year or two. And I think that that's really important because we get so focused on what's happening right now. But to that end, I think it kind of makes us then think too about more partnerships that we could maybe think about that are mutually beneficial, that maybe aren't at a cost to us, but that we could utilize with more universities or more things that they, they get as much mileage out of these partnerships as we do, and hopefully can stay low-cost so we can continue to expand offerings and not be implicated by rising budgets. So I, I appreciate that because it helps us in our planning and our goal-setting for the future. So that was great. My question, my one question is about forecasting for capital projects. So we, what we had done in the past, I thought was fair, and I always love to be fair to all of our buildings, is we, we kind of looked at playgrounds and outside spaces, and we did them kind of a one or two at a time. And we said, in terms of forecasting, this year we're doing blank and blank, and next year we're doing this school and this school. I wonder if it's also fair to do that with the air conditioning of some of the larger spaces? Because Mr. Gavin and I did do the Hewitt tour, and we had that conversation with the principal when we talked about the auditorium, that there are other large spaces in the other buildings that are not air-conditioned as part of that initial bond and project when we brought the air conditioning in in the first place. So I would ask that, you know, if this is where we're settled on for this year, that we think ahead of what other spaces in the district and the other six buildings. I see that we have a couple in the high school that we're replacing this year, but that we keep in mind a rollout effect for that. Because I always just like that consistency and making sure that every building feels that we're keeping them in mind with those kinds of projects.
Yeah, I think we can definitely do it. We had that conversation. One of the things we have to keep in mind though is too is cost. So a cost for Hewitt's room might be different than, say, the entire gymnasium at the high school. That might be something that would take up maybe 1.8 million of all of the money. So we would have to kind of like lay that out progressively so that we have a plan to get, make sure that we're addressing all of those.
Yeah, I appreciate it, okay.
And, and just for some, not the auditorium, but some smaller spaces and rooms, there is some replacement of units in the equipment budget too, wherein things that, I didn't go into every item in that equipment budget. The larger spaces, yes, are planned more into in the capital. But I did want you to know, we do look at them in, in the other spaces, as you know, as well.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Those, you know, and the way I look at it is the multipurpose spaces in these buildings are utilized by the building maybe during their school day, but by our community, you know, and other times too. So I think it does benefit, you know, us, and I think our taxpayers can support that when they know that these spaces are not just singular to a building, but they do support the kids and some of the things that we're doing, graduations or whatever it may be across the district. So I just feel like as a taxpayer, that's something I would want to know, that your money, it's, it's not just that we pick a building, and that's the building that wins for the year, but that we're always looking at these things. And I, I do feel we've been very fair, so we continue to do that. Again, I think you did a really great job. There's a lot of information. It's like you've been here forever, so you're stuck with us now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Similarly, thank you for the presentation. I think it was very transparent. It was very clear. And I think there's really good rationale behind where all of these numbers are coming from. So I appreciate that. And I think just in general, thinking about the budget, I feel like it's just frustrating where we're seeing 5% increases, 10% increases, 30% increases, and we're increasing 2.6%. So it feels like we are trying to do more. So it feels like we are trying to do more, but we have less. And the cycle doesn't seem like it's going to end. And therefore, in my mind, it just doesn't feel sustainable. Like if we're only getting this small increase and we're seeing all of these exterior increases, how do we keep up with that? How do we continue to maintain programs? So similar to Mrs. Gruner and Mrs. Hackett, you know, a lot of my questions really revolve around what is the action plan for moving forward? And are there other options, even just thinking about transportation? Is it worth looking into owning our own bus fleet, looking at electric buses or partial fleets? You know, just to kind of offset that. If transportation, if we get hit with a fifty percent increase in three years from now, that's like a lot, a lot. You know, and I don't, I don't, I don't need an answer. I'm just kind of thinking about these things. You know, thinking about nicer for insurance. If we're continually seeing fifteen percent increases, are they still the best option for us? And again, we can't forecast what they'll be next year. But that's really where my concern lies, is just in the fact that we're being hit with increases that are, they don't seem fair for what we're able to come back with. So again, I really appreciate everything that is being done with, with what we have. It seems excellent to me, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. May I have a motion to approve items G two through J eleven?
So moved.
Second? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to return to executive session to discuss employment history of a particular person?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Our next meeting is on March thirteenth at seven PM, and it is a regular meeting. Have a great evening.